So, three on one side and one on the end. Is that how that works?
Four in one.
Four in one, yeah. Yeah, that's what I meant.
All right. I'm Tim Skagans. I'm calling this meeting of the Shasbury Select Board to order on Monday, May 15th, 2015. First up, does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
Approval of minutes. We have several sets of minutes to approve. Minutes from April 20th. I move we approve.
Second.
The minutes from April 20th, seconded by Mitch Race. Any discussion?
I've got an update for section number nine. Fire chief discusses equipment. I asked him if the current equipment related to the new pumps would be able to handle the new pump pressure. And he said, he assured me they would. I just want to get these new pumps now and just go out and use them once.
Okay. You're suggesting that as a correction?
Or just an addition.
An addition. The problem with circulating these in PDF is I can't add notes to them. So, Dave, if you can make note that.
Number nine, just say.
Mitch's correction.
The trace asked, Joe, chief, if the equipment we have would handle the new pumps standards. And Joe said yes.
Any other additions or corrections to the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
One more.
Sorry.
I got one more. Sixteen, you gave us projections on equipment inventory spreadsheet, year model make, purchase price, and replacement costs with different options. I think that's important. This one had number sixteen, it just add with the different options. You gave us like three different options. Sixteen capital equipment.
All right. The one I just opened up stops at fifteen. Oh, no. I just got the blank page, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. There's a blank page.
I'm sorry, I was lost on the blank page. What was your point?
Just, and replacement cost, you displayed, projected the whole things with multiple different options, with different options. And we chose the one at the end to go with a hundred thousand or what we recommended. The purchase price and replacements with different options. With the different options of how much we would have to pay in each year, you gave us different graphs.
Oh, okay. With.
Different payment options, or different investment options, or however you want to put it.
Different set aside options. How about that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That would be good.
So, what do you want to say, Mitch? After replacement costs and different reserve fund set aside options.
Different reserves. Cost with different reserve options.
Is that it? Any others? All in favor of the minutes from April 20th, say aye.
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 Motion is agreed to, five zero zero. Next, we have minutes from May 4th.
First.
May 1st.
May 1st. Oh, special meeting on May 1st. I move we accept the minutes from May 1st.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any discussion, additions or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
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 Minutes are agreed to, five zero zero. And then minutes from May 4th. I move we accept.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are agreed to, five zero zero. Yeah, Dave, I think we better go ahead and circulate the minutes in the Dropbox in Word format so we can.
We don't can, uh, okay.
And then you print out that copy.
Yeah, then we'll have to print it out and sign it at the following meeting. Might be better just to, all right, we'll put it in Doc in Dropbox and PDF online.
Oh, but then we have to update it.
It has to be updated, then insigned. That's why we write it in here.
Copying it as a PDF.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you don't want, the reason for sending it out as a PDF to everybody is you don't want everybody editing, and we don't know what's going on.
Right, right.
So, if we make minor adjustments here, if we get into a major adjustment, I could bring it back for the next one. If it's just adding a sentence here or there, we can just write it in and sign it here.
So, you wrote it in on that piece of paper?
On those, yeah.
And that's, yeah, but.
We can redo it and then bring it back for the next one.
Yeah, or maybe not.
Yeah, it is, there's just, if everyone starts editing it, we're going to have a mess of minutes.
That's what you're supposed to do, look at it.
Well, yeah, you're looking at them and then coming up with the final product, that's the problem. We can't have five final products walking.
We often make corrections to them here.
Well, then maybe I can accept the corrections you sent out to me, I'll just accept them and turn them in the next morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we should just.
I mean, I can stop by.
And just sign them and approve it, yeah. As long as they're all approved and we'll just accept the changes and that'll be it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we can just do it that way.
All right. Warrants. Just the one?
There's just one warrant this week.
We have check warrant number 24 and the amount of forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-five cents. I move we approve. Seconded by Mitch Race. Items over a thousand dollars. Robert Green, thirteen hundred for, that's oil.
That's oil, fuel oil.
UI Insurance Services, twenty-two hundred.
That's fire department insurance.
Fire department insurance, okay. William E. Daly, fifty-five hundred. Applied Rescue Systems, ninety-eight hundred.
That's half of the new explication equipment for the fire department. It's like the down payment, and we'll make the second payment in July.
Thank you. Endine, one thousand.
That was for the landfill test back in October. They're kind of slow on their billing.
Okay. Green Mountain Power, sixty-eight, forty-eight.
That was to change all the streetlights, and we've already received a check for sixty-seven hundred from Efficiency Vermont, so that's actually a hundred and forty-eight dollar cost to the town.
Mountaineer Assessor's, the appraiser, twenty-six hundred. Murray Brothers, eleven hundred. Remind me what Murray.
Oh, Murray Brothers, are they the bathroom contractors?
Sure.
They have already pre, had custom made some of these shelving and things, and would like to get paid, so they can.
All right. Any discussion on check warrant number 24? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, five zero zero. Announcements.
I hope everyone in town can come out and support Shasbury's Ordinary Hero for 2015 on May 30th at two to four at the Galusha Homestead. The ceremony will begin at three. Come on out and support your local heroes.
Anyone else have an announcement?
I have one other one.
Go ahead.
It's not on the agenda, so I'm going to just mention it, that people should go out and check out, we have the web, Listers website up, attached to the town website. People should go out and validate their own tax parcels and make sure it's entered correctly. This is what's going to generate the grant list, and right now, I there's, I know of one instance, if there's one, there's probably more, so I would think, behoove everyone to go out and check out the listing on the website, and bring it to someone's attention when you find a discrepancy.
I wanted to announce that we closed on the North Road property on 13th of May. That was drive to Manchester, to the attorney's office. I had to sign my name one time to close on the property, and then it was done, and I drove back. I don't know why, but when I buy a house, I have to sign my name till my fingers bleed. But Shasbury buys it, it's just one signature. Also want to remind people that the school is sponsoring a 5K fun run called Mr. Harrington's Finish Line 5K. That will be on June 21st, Father's Day at 9:00 AM. Mr. Harrington, who's been the gym teacher at Shasbury for 31 years, is retiring this year. He is much loved, and we're going to miss him a lot, and we want to honor his time here with this event. So, there are notices up and around. You can go to the school and find out how to register for the race, how to donate money for the race if you don't want to run. And it's a town-wide event, really, and people are coming just to show up and visit about how they were in Mr. Harrington's gym class 31 years ago. So, I hope a lot of people will show up for that. Let me also point out, as I should have at the top of the meeting, that we made a couple of minor changes to the schedule, to the agenda. The authorization for coin drop for the fire department is not on tonight. It comes in October, we're told, and it's on the, on our reminder calendars in the wrong place. And we are going to have a discussion about credit card policy. We don't have credit cards. The town doesn't have credit cards now. We're going to suggest that we do that for internet purchases. And I've moved that from down on the list up to the treasurer's, closer to the treasurer's report, so it can be discussed while Melanie's here. All right, back to the agenda. Item six, public comments. I see no public. Treasurer's report, Melanie.
Does everybody have a copy of the report that I, did you put that out there, Dave?
I didn't get it on the Dropbox.
Oh, okay. I do not have enough copies for everybody then, because I was assured.
Okay, yeah, it's all Dave's. It is, I must admit.
Well, here are three. You want to share?
You said you sent it to me, and I was like, she already sent that to me, why she sent it to me?
Yeah. As you can see, that at the top, the April is just where we stood at the last meeting. So, you can see that basically the difference is just about five thousand dollars in revenue in the form of pays you throw, and some cemetery fees, and there might, no, there are not delinquent taxes in there. Those have come in more recently. So, I mean, you take the sidewalk out, that we've always, we talk about this every time, there's a budgeted sidewalk that's not happening this fiscal year, although it's going to happen very shortly after the end of the fiscal year. You take that out, that's the next set of numbers down here. So, we're, the forecasting to the end of year, you can see that I'm forecasting dipping into the reserve fund by about sixty-five thousand dollars versus the budgeted hundred and twenty. So, that means we're actually, it looks like a negative number, but we're actually, you know, fifty-five, sixty-five thousand dollars ahead of where we expect it to be. And these are firming up, we can pretty, pretty sure that that's where we're going to end up. There could be some surprises in highway, but getting more and more unlikely at this point. So, we're assuming some more revenue coming in, in the form of some grants that usually come in in June. So, if those happen on schedule, that's going to be forty-eight thousand dollars in revenue. And other than that, we're about ninety-nine percent complete. And I think that's conservative, because we are still seeing revenue coming in at a fairly brisk pace, because people are visiting the transfer station a lot these days.
Spring cleaning?
I guess so, yeah. Expenditures, I am projecting about eighty-five percent complete. That's based on the assumption that there are three more warrants this fiscal year, and if they come in around where they have been coming in, then we should be right on track here. You see, in the, under notes, I won't go through them all, but there are, that's just where the major variances that are real are still, those are real. Most of them are timing, but those, the ones I have listed under two are real variances. Any questions about any of this?
No?
No.
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Good. All right, Dave, are you ready to talk credit card policy?
Yeah, well, we move on to the credit card policy before we go to the next. This has been something that's come up several times since I've been down administrator. I would go down and use my own Amex card to buy pumps and things like that when it came up. This time, though, we need a sleeve for the Army surplus truck. They're not easy to find. There's one out in Wisconsin, it's ninety dollars, and no one's going to wait for a check for three weeks from us. And it's just, I think, time that we have a simple credit card, so that we can buy these parts online. There's even delays, even a simple thing like replacing part of a computer, we have to come up, get a check approval, send a check out, it's all two, three weeks delay, whereas we could just have the credit card statement at the end of the month and just pay it, and this is what it was for. As the addendum that came out this afternoon has on here, it would just be limited to three thousand, just as it is now in the purchasing policy. The card would have a five thousand dollar max, and I would be the only authorized user of it. And again, it's just, this has come up numerous times, and I can think of a few other times where we could have done it, and we've put off purchases, we've been put off fixing the Army truck for a couple of weeks, because we're, you know, trying to figure out how to pay for it. And meanwhile, this guy has X number of kits that he's selling, and, you know, they'll disappear. So, I think it's just a necessary part of doing business today on the internet and getting things rapidly. And you still get the same statement at the end of the month, and we just pay it off, you know, on the next warrant. And I don't want to use my own on PayPal to some guy with a barn in Wisconsin.
Mm-hmm. So. Melanie, are you, are you okay with this?
Yeah, I reviewed the League of Cities and Towns policy on it. They think it's a really good idea, but we just have to have the same controls that we have for petty cash or anything else, and we know how to do that, so, yeah.
And as David alluded, the credit card policy, the model credit card policy from VLCT in a section called Call Holders and Limits, says the select board will determine which officers and town employees will be authorized to use the credit card, and will establish limits. I suggested an addendum that reads, as per Card Holders and Limits section of credit card policy for the town of Shasbury, the select board sets the following limits on credit cards and their use. The town administrator is authorized to acquire one card in his or her name for making town purchases. The town administrator is responsible for any and all credit card purchases. Other town officials and employees requiring credit card purchasers shall request them from the town administrator. No single credit card purchase shall exceed the limit on incidental purchases as decided, that should be defined, in the town's purchasing policy, currently less than three thousand dollars, and the credit limit on the card shall not exceed five thousand dollars. So, if there's no thoughts, go ahead.
My only concern is, is that if it's in Dave's name, is he the only one that can use it? What happens when you go on vacation or out here or something like that, Dave?
Well, I think the card would actually read, well, it would probably be my name with Town of Shasbury, or we might be able to get it in the Town of Shasbury's name. We can, we can look at that with people's. But it should probably be in Town of Shasbury's name, but I should be the only one authorized to use it.
You're the signator.
You guys can all, of course, override that, when I'm going on vacation, so, yeah, if it came up in the two, in the week or two I was gone, then.
Do you want to put it at two names?
That would be up to the board. That gets to be the control issue. Or you could just say the chair of the select board, I guess, because everything always the first of the chair, so.
What if I just take out in his or her name, and we figure out what's the appropriate, either Town of Shasbury or.
I think the Town of Shasbury would be.
Town administrator. They're probably going to want a name on it, though.
They're going to want a name, because they're going to have to be able to identify a person using it.
You could have two authorizing signatures. You could put the Town of Shasbury and have two authorized signatures. So, it'd be Dave and yours.
My company credit cards have equipment speed store, and then my name underneath it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the two signatures would probably get their own.
And other people, other than you, can use it?
Absolutely.
And you have a certain, certain people that are authorized to use it?
Just, no.
No, just.
They signed their name. Well, they just signed their own name.
Oh, okay.
Well, for control purposes here, I think it'd be best to have one name or two at max.
Well, I think one, I think we haven't had it, I mean, how often?
It doesn't come up that often, so that'd be that big an issue.
Yeah, I think one probably.
Well, the minute you get it, it will.
Yeah.
I just, I'd be aware.
Well, but the thing is, that's the other part of it, is for us, we have to put a break on everything. It's just not for that immediate convenience of stuff. It's for when the pump on the chloride truck broke last year, and everybody's out on jobs or away, and the thing can't move until someone goes to get a pump. Or, in this case, this guy with the sleeve we need for a piston in Wisconsin. Most of the other stuff, we should still just do the normal, you know, send us a thing. This should only really be for real.
Exceptions.
Yeah, I mean, even on, online, we can make purchases in a normal manner.
Well, what if this is changed to read, the town administrator is authorized to acquire one credit card for making town purchases?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you could probably have whoever it is.
So, in that case, I move that we adopt the VLCT model credit card policy as the Town of Shasbury credit card policy with the addendum as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is passed, five zero zero. Good, thank you. We were kind of anxious to get that done, so we could buy this part, fix the truck.
Now, procedurally, we could sign the policy today and the addendum, which has to be changed another day. Or you could have just stopped by and signed it during the week. But the policy itself stays the same, but the addendum will need a change.
Yeah. Well, I've got it amended here. We have to print it. I can sign it. Everybody's okay with Dave moving ahead to sign, to acquire the credit card, and then we can sign, sign the policy.
Okay, at the next meeting, we'll sign it all at the next meeting. Okay.
All right. Dave, we were going to talk about potentially restructuring the treasurer's office.
Yeah, I think there's a few things that have come up.
First, Melanie, you, I guess the first item of business is that you saw that no one was offering to take this job, and you raised your hand, and you've been helping us out a lot, but you've decided it's not the job you want in the long term?
Yeah, I mean, really, the, I came to the conclusion fairly early on that it is a job for an accountant, for a true accountant. And I am doing ninety to ninety-five percent of it fine, but it's those exceptions that make me actually a little bit worried about how incredibly complicated the accounting is. And I think that, I've talked about it with Dave very openly since the very beginning, that I'm, I'm fine going along day to day, but there's, there are going to be situations where it's just beyond me. And I'm perfectly happy to do it until you find somebody better. So, I'm not leaving next week, you know? I don't, I don't want to have you guys be left in the lurch, and you really would be. So, you need somebody who can do the job better than I can.
Well, we think you're doing a good job, and we appreciate your help, and wish we could talk you into staying on, but this whole situation with first, nobody running for treasurer, and then Melanie taking the job, but then deciding that it's not what she wants to keep doing, brings up the, the reason to think about restructuring the treasurer's office, is that there's absolutely no continuity come election day in all financial actions of this, of this town.
And I think Melanie just, just hit it. If, if the treasurer was to depart one day, we would really be in a bind. We would be in a big fix. So, I'm looking around at how other towns do it. Other towns have intermediate position, they have the bookkeeper, and whatever they want to call the other position, a financial coordinator, and then the treasurer. The restructuring, I sent around a few things I found from the towns of Jericho and Moorestown that restructure how we would go about things here. Basically, Jones' position, which is accounts payable payroll, and there's a couple of other things on there, solid waste reporting, and Veemers reporting, which is the pension system reporting, would stay pretty much the same. The financial coordinator position would take on all the bookkeeping practices that the treasurer is doing now, the computer system, NIMRIC management, NIMRIC updates, maintaining the fund accounting system, which, which is, just the way, governmental fund accounting is how it's all, all works. Presenting a cash on hand schedule to the select board, financial statements, attending select board meetings as required, helping to, with the treasurer, be a group effort to get things ready for the auditors, performing other tasks. Another part is tax bill season. Having a third person would help a great deal when we're processing all the tax bills. They would assist the treasurer with tax collections, and we would start receiving water bill payments and, and actually doing the billing, water billing here. We get a large number of people come in asking questions about water bills, complaining about water bills, and a lot of this information is offsite. It's not here, we don't do the billing, we just collect the money. So, it's, it's kind of difficult that way. The treasurer's role, it's kind of moving towards how the BRSU and the SBSU have the treasurer. The treasurer now is also, this town treasurer is also the school treasurer. And that, the role I'm looking at is more in line with how the school district would do all the basic functions to present things to the treasurer, to sign the checks, to do bank transfers, develop the tax rate. And of course, here, by, by vote, the treasurer is also the collector of taxes. Now, in restructuring the three, we could do the whole thing for only about twenty-five hundred dollars more than we're spending now. These are all part-time jobs.
Take it.
And as time goes by, when you have, if you're figuring with each person taking two weeks off, it gives you more time and tax time. We could actually staff the office more at the critical tax collection time, because in my one experience here, that gets very backed up, and it comes a lot, a lot of work downstairs. But there's, the biggest benefit is there will be continuity in the office. You'll have the accounts payable payroll, which is fine, it just functions on its own now. But should a treasurer or anybody else, even if accounts payable left, there's some person to continue on with, with the work in the office. The difference in having the financial coordinator, I'm just going to call it that, we can call it whatever we want, as a town employee, is that the treasurer can appoint an assistant treasurer and dismiss an assistant treasurer at will. So, then you still have the same problem of continuity. A town employee would just work for the town, and would continue on until dismissed by the select board. One of the other, another interesting part of this, though, is that a treasurer, once elected, could decide that they won't, don't want to work with the town employees. They'll do it on their own, which is all fine, but the select board sets the pay, and it would be six thousand, and even if you do everything on your own, it's not going to be any more than six thousand. So, that, that would be unlikely to happen, but it's something I have to warn you against, that it is possible. The change now is, I look at, Melanie has been completely upfront since she's been here about this, which made me start thinking about, looking at, this is an opportunity to make changes that would make things smoother in the long run. Because Melanie's the treasurer now, we could hire. Because Melanie's the Treasurer now, we could hire this person, establish this position. With Melanie agreeing, obviously, the, the pay that's going to the Financial Coordinator would come substantially from the Treasurer's pay. And then when Melanie resigns, we would be looking at appointing a new Treasurer in the new structure we have.
With the new description.
With the new description and a new pay rate. Currently, if you take the sixteen the Treasurer gets and spread it out over ten, forty hours, and that's not adequate for the amount of time spent in writing reports and tax time, the rate is pretty low. By reducing the Treasurer to six thousand dollars, which comes out to about five hours a week, building up a little more on tax time, the rate gets substantially higher, around twenty-three dollars. And that maybe we can attract someone who would be interested in, someone with a substantial background who would be interested in trying to write some of these more complicated reports that the government is expecting us to be producing soon, actually, this year, but I don't, I don't know if that's gonna happen. And then the person who would be, the Financial Coordinator, would be at a, at a fairly attractive wage also. And they'd be here for sixteen dollars, sixteen hours a week. And then we'd be back to twenty hours total with Joan and the Financial Coordinator, and the Treasurer come by. The office would actually be staffed more than it is now. I know that was a quick, broad outline of something, but I've run by a few of these, these things past Bill Fisk, and he's offered to come in and go through definitions. I've gone through some of these with Joan. This is like, more or less, the first draft, just that there's something out here. But I think we need to decide whether we're going to make a change, and then I'll get this formalized, and we can decide the next meeting, or we, we stay this way we are. But we, we have to make a change at some point soon.
Melanie, as you alluded to, by convention, I guess, the Town Treasurer is the, also the School Treasurer. And there, your responsibilities are quite a bit smaller, and the bulk of the financial responsibilities, financial accounting and all of that, is handled by a business manager, Rick Pembroke, who does it for the...
Right.
Old SU along with assistance.
Is considerable staff, too.
Yeah, with, with the staff. But it's kind of along that, that line, where we have a, a town employee who does the database stuff, does the office hours, and then an elected Treasurer who has the responsibility, the statute, the, the state-required responsibility for the finances of the town. But it's not required to be here and, you know, print out copies of people's tax bills and things like that.
Yeah, it's more, there are a lot of things, and sitting downstairs and, and watching this, there's a lot of interaction with people coming in, water, water bills especially, the taxes, and there's a lot of things to do, but there's, there's levels we can break this out to. The, the oversight of the Treasurer is very important. It's always gonna be their responsibility. And then preparing the end-of-year statements and things like that. They would have no time to do this because they wouldn't be getting bogged down in the day-to-day operations. And between my offices and Joan and, and the new Financial Coordinator, there'd be three people working on different aspects of this. One thing I have to run by, Bill Fisk or somebody else, is just making sure we're all broken up so there's no overlaps that the auditors wouldn't like to see. But it's not uncommon to have this kind of arrangement in other towns. Again, the Treasurer's position would still remain attractive with our six thousand and whatever the School Board's paying, you know?
Changing the charter, or, I mean, can we do this without, without the public vote?
We don't, we don't have a charter, so we don't have to, we don't have to do that.
No change in charter.
I, if we, one of the things I am gonna look into, if, if the Board's on, in favor of continuing to examine this, is get onto VLCT and get a legal opinion of whether or not, because that's occurred to me, too. Do we have to vote to change this? We have to, because I got one response from a town going, "Well, if you wanna get rid of the Treasurer, you know, this is how..." I'm like, "We don't wanna get rid of the Treasurer. No one's talking about that." Well, actually, you can, but we don't, we don't wanna do that. We, we want, we want to just stay what we want. We just wanna restructure so we have redundancy and, and, you know, some security in what's going on. Other towns have Treasurers. Actually, this town, Jericho, where I pulled par of this, they have a Treasurer, they have the Financial Coordinator, they have a bookkeeper. Many towns have it. But I would run it by just legal opinion, so there's no question that we're not, but I don't wanna spend money until we're sure we wanna...
In the state statute, there you have to have a Treasurer, or is it...
Uh, well, if you can change your charter to do, it's a charter change. And I don't know what that means in a town that doesn't have a charter, so I'd have to, we don't have to look that way.
We have a charter, but it probably dates from seventeen sixty-one.
Yeah, Judy didn't refer to it the same way, as like a charter, and like, we'd have to really address it now.
Are they bonded, these positions of Financial?
The, only the Treasurer is bonded. The Treasurer's the only one who's totally responsible for what goes on underneath her. But if there was anything to occur, her bond would cover the accounting staff, is the way I understand it.
Interesting.
You know, if, if money, you know, if, if something happened, that bond would cover the transactions of the town. And again, you know, these are issues to pursue as we go forward, because asking some of these questions costs money.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna spend money unless the Board is in favor of pursuing this, at least a further investigation of it.
So I, I think another question is, the Treasurer is an elected official. When, when you, when, when there is a vacancy halfway through an election period, does the Select Board appoint it, or do we go?
Yes.
Okay.
You, you appoint till next, whenever a resignation occurs, you appoint to the next election date.
Okay.
Which would be next March.
And so we could appoint a person at a lesser pay, in your opinion? If, if, if we restructure all of it?
If we restructure, it'd be what, at, what the pay would be at the new restructured rate, yeah. Unless I got some legal opinion saying that we couldn't do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this will hold off the audit, or will...
Oh, no, no. The audit's, the audit's number twelve on the list. That's...
That was my question.
Separate issue, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I've thought about it. I mean, I was mentioning a while, a couple days ago or whatever, and I, I can't see a downside to it, but I'd like to get it run by some of the, I don't know what, I don't know the structure where you have one Treasurer doing like five, you know, five towns, five hours a day or whatever, and if, if they are happy doing that for part-time, that's one thing. But I'm, I'm wondering if you'll get someone...
Well, this, this job, the Treasurer as it is now, it's kind of in, in the, it, it's not full-time, although it seems like it, because at twenty hours a week, it's kind of preventing the Treasurer from really being involved in something else. I think if you're looking for someone like, like Melanie referred to with the sound financial backing or bookkeeping or whatever background, it's either cobbling together a couple of these types of jobs to make one, or someone for the Treasurer's position, I'm sorry, for the Treasurer's position, you'd be looking for a professional who's like, "Well, for this amount of time, a manageable amount, more like, like the Selectman's time, a manageable amount of time, that I could oversee this, and I have the background to oversee it," you, you'd do better.
And the Treasurer doesn't have to live in town?
The Treasurer has to live in town. It's an elected official. The Treasurer has to be from town, yes. The other staff positions don't have to be, but yes, it's an elected official, so it has to be from town. And you're hoping, you know, you're hoping that someone's out there who looks at twenty hours a week and is like, "I can't do that." You know, "I, I'm running a business, whatever. I can't spend twenty hours in Town Hall, you know, collecting the water bills and things." But, you know, for another position, I could come down and review and oversight and, you know, this is how you do a proper financial statement, the Meet Gasby thirty-four, whatever version we're on now. And then you have the Financial Coordinator, who you're looking for, a person who, that would be the person cobbling together jobs. You know, they're, they do this, you know, they've been doing bookkeeping, this, or maybe they have NIMRIC experience, and they have the proper education and background, and we see if they're willing to do sixteen hours. And with another job, you know, they, they have a pretty good deal going.
Yeah, I mean...
We also might hit the point where we're not finding the right candidate for this job. And then we, we don't move forward. My recommendation would be not moving forward unless we have the absolute right candidate, because we're just, would be making a bigger problem.
Yeah, I think we should run the job descriptions and the whole idea past VLCT. Make sure there's separation of duty between the...
Well, Bill Fisk has offered to, to come and, and sit down and, and just draw the fine lines in between all this stuff for me. Because some of it's out of my wheelhouse, absolutely, you know? I'm not an accountant either. But I know this goes on in other towns. I know it successfully operates, and I know that should the unforeseen happen, you know, you have redundancy. And that's, that's key in, in, you know, in positions like this, and we don't have it now. We've seen, like Melanie referred to before, if she got up and left tomorrow, that would be interesting. That would be an interesting day, yes.
Tim, if you're looking for him...
Yeah, I think we should make a motion.
I make the motion that we at least allow him to spend some money looking into, you know, he kept making the comment, "I don't wanna do this if we are in favor of it." My motion is we're in favor of it, which allows him to spend some money.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, we have a motion to allow Dave to pursue the idea of restructuring the Treasurer's Office to include a Financial Coordinator and redefining lesser Treasurer duties.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tony. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, five zero zero.
All right, then I'll start in, get some legal opinions and some accounting help, and we'll get done.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you, Melanie.
Okay.
You gotta come up front, Steve.
Steve, welcome.
You can't answer from the back row. Road form is report. What's it like out there?
Yeah, getting better. It is.
Yeah?
We're still fighting with the, some of the stone compaction from, you know, December.
I can barely hear you. I bet people at home are having trouble, too.
We're still fighting with some of the stone from December's thaw, and where we've had to add the, the bigger stone to get people through the muddy spots from Christmas, trying to, you know, mix it in and make it more passable and take shape better and stay compacted. But we're winding up with some washboards and stuff like that we have to try to deal with. We gotta pick up the stone and move it, or we've gotta add some more fines to it to get it to pack.
Yeah, now, explain that to me. I was led to believe washboarding was a function of grading too fast.
It can, it can be. It can be also dry weather conditions can do it. Just no, no moisture in the material you're trying to bind together.
What you're saying is a problem of the stones that we put down in December?
So much of it. It doesn't really wanna bind together. The calcium's helping with that, but it's, it can only do so much.
Okay. Yeah, there was a problem with, with the, the December mud season added some complications to getting through this spring. Like Perrin Road was a mess. So we added stone to try and make it work in December, and then some more went to potholes, and now it just has to be mixed back in together and, and get some fines back in it.
To get it to bind.
Some of the stone was larger, and it's just, it's a manageable thing, but, but we're trying to get it down. And I mean, I agree, it was, it was kinda bumpy last week. But they graded, it was graded this morning, right, Steve?
A little rain would help, right?
Perrin, yes, it would. Perrin, we just graded again this morning.
The last stone you used in December was inch and a half, or a bigger one.
That was big.
Yeah.
And the stone this spring, I think we could've gotten away with just a little bit less of it. It was on pretty thick. And it, and they can't, they just can't seem to bury it.
Then they've done that.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
I noticed the dust is worse where the, where the stone was the heaviest, too.
Yes.
It's just all, it's breaking up all the time.
You're getting chloride down, all right?
Yes, using calcium.
You, you done Daniel's road?
We ain't graded again. After we graded the second time, we will spray it this week, yes.
I got a couple calls.
Yeah, Daniel's and Perrin were about the two biggest ones with the washboarding.
West Mountain, that's one.
We got West Mountain and, and Spots, too. But chloride is going down at, at a better rate than, than before. It's, we have, we have quite a bit left, so...
You did put some water on Daniel's road, right, to deal with the dust?
Evaporate so fast, it's...
It's not real, the binding agent of the chloride.
Yeah, it's a, not the best answer, but we didn't wanna spend all the money to Chloride Daniel's Road for what was just a, a rough scrape to get the frost heaves out of it when we still have the, the deep grading plant.
Did remove the trees from Potter Montgomery. Couple of trees had fallen over across the road. They actually hung up in other trees. It was exciting driving under them. We probably will have to do some work this year on Potter Montgomery, more than we had originally intended, I think. The road, due to logging and, and maintenance issues, has deteriorated quite a bit. So we're, we're gonna need to put a lot more stone down than I think we were hoping to.
Should that have been posted, Dave? When they, should that have been posted this spring when they were logging?
I'm sorry, what do you mean, posted?
Weight limits.
Oh, oh. You know what? The, the logging, I think, was, wasn't that done in the fall, pretty much?
They worked in there all winter.
Oh, they did work in there all winter. I didn't even know they were working in there over the winter.
I didn't see any ruts. I went over it last week, and I didn't see any ruts.
No, it was just holes.
Just holes. And I don't think a weight limit would've...
Probably not, but I mean, that road is right down in a hole.
Oh, yeah, we know.
Yeah, it needs a lot of work.
A lot of the old town roads were. That's what they all were, is better.
Yeah.
Oh, it's just, but there weren't any huge ruts where they had...
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's no place for water to go except down the road.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not, it's not an easy fix, anything on there, but it's at the stage. When I drove up at last Friday, yeah, it's, it's, needs a lot of work. And we will get to it. It's okay by the residences on the south end, 'cause we graded that last week, was that? Yeah, last week. But the whole rest of it, and it is a used road, people, more will go back on it. I don't think it's being used that much now, but people will get back on it. So that's gonna be a little expense coming up.
What are you thinking we need to do to Potter Montgomery?
Oh, I'm not sure. Besides, well, go ahead, if you have a plan already.
There's really no drainage on it, but there's severely deficient in material. I mean, there, you can't put any shape to it to even try to get the water off. There's just, it's so bad. Needs quite a few, loads of material draught, draught into it and to build it up and give it ground shape to at least try to get it to the edges to get it to go somewhere into the stone walls or something to get rid of it. Need some trees cut. Bunch of issues with that road.
Does that road open year-round?
Yes.
Yes.
It is.
Class three road.
I can remember years back, they did close that in the winter.
Yeah, I have to tell you, before this past winter, and I really didn't know anything about it, I got a very substantial complaint about it not being kept open during the winter, and that the person that paid his property taxes, he had property on it, he was rebuilding the house, and he wanted access to his house. And it's like, he said, "I have property on a class three road, and I expect it to be maintained by a class three road." He's absolutely right. You know, that's, that's what the road is. So we have, we have to get it back up to an operable state. It's, it's passable now, but I do think it's...
It's rough.
Yeah, rough, thank you. That's a good point.
Okay. What's the plan for the rest of the week?
We're, we're starting around on some of the roads of the second, second round we're scraping, so we can actually get the final shape to them to make them last the longest. We still are finishing up some of the roads up north, Timber Trail, Highland Woods. Hidden Valley hasn't been graded yet. They're not horrible, but they're not, not as good as they could be either. So we're gonna try to get those shaped up as best we can. We've been replacing some signs around town that have been missing or, or took down on us, run over, destroyed. We've been doing some ditching. We did, took some berms off up on Bennett Hill. We, we seeded that down, multi and grass seed. There is some ditching through the rest of the week that we're gonna keep trying to do every day we can. We've been, guys have been using a couple of days here and there, so we're, we're shorter-handed than normal. Three of us or four of us at a time, so we do, we're doing what we can to, to get by.
Sure, yeah, that's...
Yeah, that, that brings up a, a question that we had on, when we first started talking about the comp time, was trying to use it by July first. I'd like the Board to approve extending that out a few months. Otherwise, the whole road was gonna have to take off to use up. We, we've used up so much comp time during the winter that everybody just simply has too much to possibly use by June first, July first, sorry. So I would like the Board to approve extending that so that they can use this comp time, stretch it out a little bit more. It'd be to everybody's benefit. Or, or we'll have to write them a check come July first.
What's your thoughts on going to a summer, summer schedule? And is the, the four nines and a, and a four, what you wanna do or not?
That's fine with me. There's a couple of issues this afternoon in the garage about it. We're gonna discuss it tomorrow in the morning.
Okay.
With a couple of the employee schedules. It doesn't really work in the morning with their kids having to be at the daycare, and, you know, the time you'd have to come in versus the time you have to leave.
Okay.
So we're, we're gonna talk more about that in the morning, and should have a night, some sort of an answer by tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah, we thought we were all in agreement.
Thought we were all set with it.
And then something came up this afternoon. So, you know, I talked to Steve and it's like, okay, have another meeting and let's hash out what it is we're asking for. If the nines and fours isn't gonna work, what are we, what are we talking about?
Okay.
And let's have a consensus of the five guys. I mean, you know, I'd rather the decision come from you guys.
Oh, absolutely.
So we toss it back. We'll see. But if you give us to the next meeting, or I can let you know. Normally, they would start after this weekend, but if it's nines and fours, it's not the most opportune week to start anyway. And if it stays five eights, then it really doesn't matter. Yeah, I let, I asked Steve and Ron, just go back, you guys talk and bring up a plan.
Okay. Black topping, that's, I mean, more our decisions, but will we be looking at our budget and finding out how much money I might be able to spend to do some black topping and that sort of stuff?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, coming closer to July.
Okay.
We're about done with seeing what's gonna shape up at this time of year. We do have some, some general estimates for like black topping on Harvest Hills? Harvest Hills, yeah.
Yeah, I've got, I've got one for an inch and a half as opposed to three inches, okay?
And, you know, we can see how far it goes, which isn't, isn't very far. You know, we have to do a little discussion, but we'll have the class three road fund available for some paving. We, you know, we have to, we have to see. We're trying to make a priority list because we don't have a great deal of money for the things. We still haven't heard yet from the state which, if any, grant we're getting. And that, of course, will chew up about $32,000 in matching it. So we haven't heard from them yet either, so. Of course, paving is very expensive.
I guess just a one comment, I've seen several dead trees that are really close to the road and dead limbs hanging over, so rainy day jobs, probably ought to identify some of them. I know the far end of Coal Spring Road, there's just an old rotten tree just.
Yes, I did see that the other day.
Well, anybody who is at home and knows of a rotten tree next to the road that's gonna be a hazard, you know, they can just call on the highway hotline or we'll take a look at it and decide if it's a priority or not and get them down. I mean, that's Potter Montgomery, someone called me and said, "There's this tree."
Widowmaker, huh?
Yeah, 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 and I said, "I just drove under that this morning." Very aware of that tree. So, yeah, but anybody who sees one, you know, call. You know, we're 70 miles of road, calling up to let us know and we'll respond to it. Yeah, yeah.
Has anybody looked into, well, you got trees like that and there's a power line involved of asking the power company to go in with the town and split the cost taking a tree down?
I haven't, I can't speak for anyone else.
The power company has to be spawned.
When I worked for the town, we would do that.
Yeah, the power company has to be spawned or send their contractor to remove branches around the wire, how far down they have to go, or if they want to split it. Up on Sheffery Hollow, was it? Where they took down the tops and we're gonna take down the bottoms so that we can create better ditching. But they moved their poles back last year, so they like chopped tops off.
Just under the wire so it's easier for us.
Yeah, so now it'd be easy to.
You might try that, Steve, just to check with them and see, "Hey, we got this tree. You got X number of lines in here." And get them to split the thing and save some money for the town.
Yeah, and they're just like everybody else unless someone tells them, you know.
Oh, yeah.
They have roots, they go around every, I don't know how often they do it here, but you know, usually it's every two or three years they go around and chop things.
But if it's one of them big trees, like a big maple or something.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
We can save some money, we can save some money.
Sure, absolutely. It's a good idea.
Dave, you were saying that our personnel policy requires comp time be used by end of fiscal?
Well, what we agreed to when I brought it up in January or February was July 1st. We said it should be used by, I don't really think the amount of hours we wound up using, we said they could accumulate it up to 80 hours, and they did. And I don't think it's feasible to use that by July 1st, so I think even if we ran that out to the end of the calendar year, it would just spread out over time and it would disappear. Normally, you couldn't really set restrictions on comp time, so I would just say, you know, let them run it out to the end of the year and use it up. There's really no way to do it other than pay them by July 1st for the comp time. Because, you know, it's in lieu of overtime. It's a way for us to save money, so if we don't pay them by July 1st, it's, that's an arbitrary line by the board. We can just extend it out and use it by the end of the year. I don't think there'd be any objection from the crew to have the rest of the year to use it by. You know, they pop a day here and there and it's gone.
Forgive my memory, we decided in December that we were going to.
No, I think it was January or February, I'd have to look for the exact date, but when it was clear, we were running through with snowstorms, the overtime budget, we started going to comp time. Might have even been end of February.
Early March, yeah.
And we had a couple of storms and I forget the exact number of hours, but it was something like 49.5 equals 80 hours or something crazy like that. And we went through that, but we didn't pay any more overtime. But I think all, if you weren't, didn't max it, you were right at the edge of maxing it and it finally stopped snowing. But they all have this time and it's not.
Where does it say they have to use it by?
Well, we just picked a date.
Oh, that as a motion at that time?
Yeah, as the board, part of the motion, we just said July 1st. So I'm just suggesting that we just, you just make a motion that they use it by the end of the year.
So moved.
We have a motion that we allow the road crew to use their comp time through the end of the calendar year instead of by July 1st as previously agreed to.
And with an addendum to say, if you don't use it by then, you lose it?
Or we have to pay them for it?
Yeah, you can't, you can't, they just can't lose it.
No, you have to.
You have to, you have to pay them.
That's right, that's right.
So let's, let's just say they have until the end of the year, the end of the calendar year to use it and we'll.
Encourage them to do so.
Yeah, I'm gonna cross that bridge when we come to it.
Yeah, yeah. And we're gonna have a new policy to cover all this.
Well, didn't, didn't we say we could only build up so much comp time?
Yeah.
80 hours.
So and carry over till the next year or?
No, 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 we just said to July 1st, that we want them to use it by July 1st, which is not practical because they wound up using every minute of it or accumulating every minute of it and, you know, they'd all be gone till July 1st if they all had to use that. Some of them have vacation time, they still need to do it, so it will just work out to the end of the year. We're gonna have a new approach to this that I'll bring to the board over the summer. There's procedures for comp time that we should get down for future use and have this a policy of the board, that we can either give it or not, but as we give it, this is how it's done. If, what limits can be set on it? I'm actually going to something that talks about this in a couple of weeks, that exactly how this is to be done.
Okay. We have a motion by Art, I'll second it. The motion is to allow the road crew to use their comp time until the end of the calendar year instead of until the end, until July 1st as previously agreed to. Any more discussion on that point? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion is agreed to, five zero zero. All right. Anything else we need? All right. Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Next up, Ken brought to our attention that the town of Rupert just built a new town garage and they had an open house for it on Saturday. And he and I took a road trip up there and took a look at it.
Did they have refreshments?
They did, they had home baked goodies and coffee and they were very proud of it. Ken has circulated some pictures, I've got some here that didn't really focus all that well. But you can see, this is the outside of the building. It's a very nice looking building. Inside, it's just a big open space, five bay garage. Ken, you were talking about how much you liked the ventilation system and the clean ceiling line there.
Yeah, the one that last year when Karen Meliger and myself and other people went to pitch down, they had a garage, I think it was some larger than that, but the vents they had for the exhaust of the trucks, where they had one hanging down for each bay. And to me, that's just something looking to get ripped off the ceiling. Because you back a truck in there and somebody's not paying attention, or you back an excavator in and they're gonna hook them and rip them down. If you see those two cupolas on the top, that's where their vent goes. They have two big fans in there to jar the exhaust out of the building.
Through, through the ceiling?
Through the ceiling.
Right through the ceiling.
Right, you see, well, the one, the picture on the right, is you've got a draft ceiling in that. And then you've got stresses above that to the roof. And it's a lot cleaner. It's, like I say, you don't have the problem with that stuff hanging down. And I like the looks of that building a lot better. They have no floor drains, the floor is pitched from, would be, if you're looking at the picture on the right hand side, the top one, that floor is pitched from the right to the left. And there's no, no floor drains.
Is there gutter before the doors?
Nope, nope. It all goes out because if you let it go out and it goes on top of the ground and you can see it, you don't have to worry about.
Okay.
That's what, that's what the, Morton built this building and the guy I talked to there for quite a while, Ken did too, was telling us if you build a drain and trap it.
And collect it?
Collect it, you've got a toxic waste problem. If you just let it run out the front of the building, then Maynard can come out and see what ran out of the front of the building and then if they see something they don't like, they'll tell you to clean it up.
Just like putting motor oil on a road.
If they don't, don't tell you they see anything, then you're okay. I don't know that I'm entirely comfortable with just running all of our leaky oil out the front of the building, but.
Well, no, if it got out of the floor, they'll do a speedy dry on it anyway. So it's gonna be all soaked up anyways.
With that, with that roof vent, how do you stop all the heat from being?
You don't leave it on, Tony. You just, it's when the trucks are running in there, you turn the fan on. And then you don't do it where the door's closed. If the doors are open and they have release, releases on there, so if your power went out, you could still open the door and you're not trapped.
And it's already in heat, so it's heating from the floor?
It's already heating the floor.
Oh, cool.
And on the, if you look at the picture on the left, on the right hand side where the white truck is, that, on that end of the building is your offices, your lunch room, your furnace room.
Yep, they've got a little space at one end for office and break room and meeting room.
They have roofline gutters that go down into a drain that goes out 700 feet out back of the garage. So any water, and the roof is built in such a way that if there's snow up there, it doesn't go in the gutter, it slides over it. Because there's horizontal straps on the roof that somehow slows the snow down so it don't all come down at once.
Yeah. How much did it cost?
Half a million.
Half a million?
Half a million. 60 by 120.
When we were looking at some proposals for our garage, there was a lot of talk about one bay being maintenance bay where it was a lot special. I mean, there was a lot more per cubic per square foot than the rest of it. I don't see that here.
No, these are just five identical bays here.
I don't know why you need a separate bay just for maintenance. I mean, maybe Steve would have an idea, but each one of those bays is more than, well, you can see where that dump truck is, how much room you've got in behind it. If you had to, I don't know why you couldn't put a machine in there.
Behind it.
Behind it lengthways. You know, and I asked him about a washing bay and he said you could put one in there with a petition and then you could either put a drain in and deal with it or just wash it, you know, take a squeegee and clean it up. And the insulation is two inches of spray foam and six inches of fiberglass.
So two inches of spray foam down low and the fiberglass?
The whole, as I understood, the whole inside wall.
And so they did the vapor barrier and then put the six inches of the stuff on the inside?
That's the way I understood it.
I think it's the other way around, is they fill it up with fiberglass and then they seal it with foam.
That's not a steel built, is that a?
No, it's a wood building with a metal exterior, interior. And a metal ceiling inside.
Is it post, like a pole barn type of thing or is it?
No, I mean, it's all, the thing is completely pre-span inside.
60 foot rafters.
Laminated beams that are, provide the structure.
But is it sitting on, is there a foundation? Is there a foundation?
It's frost walls.
Frost walls, okay. So it isn't just posts?
Looks like it comes up, and it looks like it comes up about a foot on this side. Then you got the green and then the gray. Is that the frost wall that comes up above the ground?
Yeah, it's, it's higher and the floor comes up higher in the back and lower in the front. Like, I think it's, I think you said there's a six inch pitch from one side to the other.
And the half million probably didn't include excavation and all that sort of stuff?
No, they got excavation was donated. It did not include a general contractor. The select board had some expertise in that field and they, they did the general contract work themselves.
One of the selectmen did most of the excavation. And Morton made up all electrical and all the separate things, so you had separate contract for concrete, electrical, heat.
And that was not part of the half million?
The way I understood it, that was part of it, okay?
Yeah, that was all part of it, but the, paying the person, which would normally be $100,000 to manage a project like this was done by the select board.
And the excavation and was done by a member of the select board?
Yeah, or a member of town who donated his backhoe to do it, yeah.
And they don't have the concrete apron in front of the doors either yet.
No, okay.
But they're gonna put them on there?
They're gonna put them on.
You got to. It's gonna be a mud hole. Especially, you know, if the water drains out of the building, it's gonna be a mud hole.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it'll be ice in the water, ice.
So what I wanted to do was I pulled back up this, this analysis we looked at a few months back, mainly because Ken was not here when we covered that and it's worth, worth reviewing, but I went back to some of the original engineering estimates and I believe this was real preliminary stuff even before MKS became involved where someone just said, you know, a maintenance bay costs so much per square feet and a regular truck bay costs this much per square feet and offices this much and utility spaces this much. And then went through looking at different scenarios for, for size. And this first scenario was for seven truck bays, a maintenance bay, a pole barn and meeting space, essentially the, the first garage proposal that came down. And with, with these numbers, I came up with something around a half a million, which was what that original proposal was. So that was to say, using these numbers, we can get a ballpark idea of what, what a garage can cost and then start playing with different parts of it. And the different parts of it that we started playing with is whether or not we had a repair bay, how many truck bays there were, whether or not we had coal storage, how big is the office and the, the cost of the salt shed. But here in this first one, keep in mind that in this million and a half garage facility, the garage building with the seven, with the eight bays is $900,000. And then we looked at a six bay option, I'm gonna skip over to the five bay option. In this case, the fifth bay is a maintenance bay, but this is the closest to what we were looking at in Rupert. And this is a million dollar facility. Again, the garage building itself, which is four truck bays and a maintenance bay, is the garage building itself is half a million. And this compares well to what we just saw in Rupert because this does not include site work and it doesn't include the general contractor, which in this scenario is in scenario is included in contingency and profit.
Two hundred thousand.
Yeah. So, uh, and that's two hundred thousand for the whole project.
Yeah, three hundred and fifty thousand minus the salt shed and the contingency, three hundred and forty-one thousand.
I'm sorry, what, what numbers are you talking about?
The salt shed and the contingency, you cut those out of there and it drops it down to...
Yeah, yeah. But, uh, the, the point here is that, uh, you know, if we, we can build a, a garage facility with a half-million-dollar, five-bay garage, but we're still talking about around a million-dollar project by the time you include things like general contractor fees and salt sheds and these, uh, miscellaneous things that, uh, have to be included in that. And Steve, this might be a good time to, if you want to chime in on your thoughts on a, on a five-bay garage, would that, would that serve our needs?
You've got six trucks in there.
Can you come up, cause I, I can't hear you, and I know nobody at home can.
Talking about having like six trucks, correct?
The, uh, when we've been whittling this down to try and get, uh, out a proposal that's, uh, what we think in the, in the minds of the voters within budget, um, the, the four bays are to, to load up the plow trucks, uh, the night before the storm, and then also to have a, a maintenance bay. But most of the equipment, the other equipment would be outside.
I like the, uh, the maintenance bay mainly because we do quite a bit of welding over here, and that's, none of that is good to breathe. And in an open garage, there's a lot of that floating around, whether it be hard facing the bleed or, or fixing a bucket.
Yeah, you can cover that up with screens, Steve.
Breathing it.
Hmm?
You're breathing it.
That's what the vents will do for you, too.
Not good to breathe.
Or get, or get just a local vent, just a hose to be in your area. I mean, I don't think that the people who's down are gonna go for that number sitting there behind you. I, I called, or I called, I got out of the internet after Tim and I come back, and they haven't sent me the information yet, but there's a company in Pennsylvania called Doubletree. And I got a price, well, I gave them numbers on a building, they would hold 600 ton of salt, and for what I wanted, and they're gonna, supposed to be sending me the spec site. They don't come up here and install, but they would send the material here to build a building. And then, this is kind of a, it's not a long building, it's a long this way. And so you would go in, you'd have like two bays to put your salt in, and a third bay on the end to use as the stone you've been using or whatever one daily wouldn't open. Um, I have no idea what the, but they build the bottom of the building with concrete blocks. The rest of it is sheet metal for the sidewalls and roof. It looks like it'd be fairly economical to build, something we could almost build ourselves, I would think. Um, and if we can get a building like that for a half a million...
I, I guess I'd like to know what the definition of a maintenance bay is. My experience has been is that if you've got one bay where you're just, where you've got your air hoses and, and all that sort of stuff set up, and, and you put a truck in there and it's gotta have a clutch job, all of a sudden...
Gotta do the clutch job.
We gotta do a clutch job, and you gotta do it fast because it shuts down everything. I have that problem, I just rent one bay, and when I pull something in there, uh, we can't even do greasing and all that sort of stuff in some cases. So my idea would be to have, make sure you have the pet cocks for air all the way down through so that you can, and the oil drums would be on wheels so that you can move them around and that sort of stuff. And so, other than welding, which I, I can see is a, might be a problem, rather than designated one thing, because when, when you do that, and that's the only place you can change the oil or grease it, you got a problem, because, oh, there's always something, an engine job, clutch, or something's broken, you gotta wait for parts and all that sort of stuff. My thing is to make the whole thing pretty much functional, as, and all it means is that you'd run extra airlines so that you can plug in your, your grease, your power grease guns and all that sort of stuff.
It'd be nice to have a lift.
They had that up there, I mean, you had, airlines went all the way down.
Sure.
It was just like, you know, built like it wanted, like a garage, like it ought to be.
Well, I mean, you'd still want to, uh, have the one place where every, all your equipment is stored on wheels or whatever, and I think you still, a maintenance bay is good to have for the big equipment, and keep everything there instead of having it in the middle of the operation.
But every time we look at maintenance bays, we look at a huge increase in the cost per, per foot, and I'm just wondering why. I don't know, is it because of fire?
Well, that included the drain, the, uh, grease drain and everything else.
I think thi- this bill, this estimate had, uh, the drains in all the bays.
Or it didn't have one down the middle of the...
Drudge drain, these, these, repair drain, yeah.
Everything included, uh, the drain.
Okay.
Um, I was guessing that it, because it included the crane and, uh, Oliver, when he was here, was thinking maybe if you had a built-in crane, you'd have to reinforce the walls to, to do that, uh...
You get into that that much?
Sometimes you got heavy stuff you gotta move, and you gotta try to get something in there to, overhead crane would be very, very handy, far as employees...
They have them, they have them, Steve, you can roll them.
A gantry.
You know, they're electric, electric crane with a...
There's a lot of ways around.
On, on wheels. And that building is big enough so that if you've got your truck backed in off of them doors, you've got plenty of room to put another machine in behind them lengthways to the building.
The, uh, this estimate here, um, it has the, and I was following the lead of the engineers, of course, was that originally the maintenance bay was longer and wider, and when I whittled it down to this, it was, um, the maintenance bay itself was wider, but it was the same length, which I guess would probably end up being the width of the building, but that was with the idea of, you know, just having a rectangular building and not have ins and outs that, that cost more money for corners. But is, uh, a maintenance bay need to be bigger than the other truck bays? Probably need at least some room on the side for...
Get around. Mainly you need a, a place to be able to wash stuff in the winter time, cause you can't wash anything. It helps prolong your equipment if you can keep it clean, get as much of the salt and, you know, sand and stuff off of it.
That's what we had, the trenches, drains in the center.
Yeah, yeah. The idea was always that we would bring the stuff inside and hose it off and all of that.
So you get them freezed off.
Road gunk and salt would go into the drain and get dealt with.
That, that building had a, a door on the end of the building, too, an overhead door, so you could back machinery in that way, too.
Yeah.
Had five front bays and one on the side, one on the end.
No, I had five, five truck bays going in this way, and then you had a door on the end there, so you'd come back in, like I said, if you wanted to put one in behind the trucks, you could do that. And you could still use one of the bays, if you had a petition there, as a wash bay.
So the main point of bringing this up again was just to, to remind us that if we can build a building for half a million dollars, doesn't mean that we can do this job for half a million dollars, it's more like a million.
The other thing is too, Tim, um, where we, where we went up there to the dump at Saturday, and I showed you where they wanted the road to go in.
Yep.
If we went on the other end, down beyond where they took the trees out, there's a road already there, you wouldn't have to do anything except put top gravel on it.
Mm-hmm. Be coming on the...
Come in on the south, come in on the south side.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
Yeah, well, in this...
You wouldn't have to do anything.
In this estimate, site work was estimated at fifty thousand dollars. Um, what do you think? Ten thousand dollars is all we're gonna need to build a road?
Well, if you came in the south side, basically all you'd have would be your, your, your time and your processed gravel, your surface gravel, and your equipment time and labor, and you could use our own equipment for that.
Mm-hmm. Surface gravel, ten thousand dollars, you think?
Yeah, probably.
So, you know, you might take, uh, forty thousand dollars off this, so you're down, you know, around nine-twenty. Um, our current schedule has us bringing an, a garage option to the voters next March when we have our next election. We would be talking about our, our FY seventeen budget then, which would, um, we would come into that money in the middle of, uh, calendar year sixteen. By that time, we'll have made three payments if we continue to do what we've been doing, which is put seventy-five thousand dollars a year into the garage reserve fund. By that time, we'll have two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in there, we'd be looking at borrowing seven hundred thousand dollars at that point to build this, if that's what we decided to build. And assuming, of course, that these numbers pan out when it, real engineers do them in twenty sixteen.
Okay.
Okay.
And our equipment expenses will be down. And we'll have a lot of that equipment paid off.
That's right, that's right.
But not all that money's going to be available, because...
Well, no, but I mean, we'll have...
Again, we got...
Less than we've got now.
Thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, we're spending two hundred thousand dollars a year. What we decided before was that we'll probably end up putting a hundred thousand dollars a year into reserve to pay for equipment, so...
Right.
We're opening up, uh...
And I, you know, I'm sorry, I don't have that out of that, they haven't got that to me on the salt shed yet.
Okay. Dave, did you ever get a number on, uh, you were talking about something called ClearView?
ClearView buildings, uh, we were talking about that, too. I don't have a number for that, but it, it would not be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and the lifespan of them, I'll get that for you. ClearViews are used widely, actually you can get them surplus now, too, uh, and they do work the same way, they're stone blocks, it's just a grid, you put fabric over the top, i- it's just to keep the snow and the rain off the, off the, the salt pile. They're, they're very cheap, we'd have to pave, you know, or put some kind of impermeable surface down, but, uh, for six hundred ton, it's, it's not a big, we don't even get six hundred a ton, we're really talking about a two hundred ton salt shed.
I, I think that was forty by thirty-two, Dave.
Forty by thirty-two?
I think it was.
Uh, yeah, I mean, that's an option that I think is well worth looking at, because it's far cheaper than this, than a hundred and fifty. Uh, it might not have, I don't know, what would this thing last, seventy-five years for that? So maybe you'd have to replace some fabric on the other thing for, uh, you know, in thirty years or something, but still it's way cheaper.
I checked with Brian Lett about those blocks, and they don't make them down there anymore.
I know they don't make blocks here anymore, but...
Well, but they've got hundreds of them sitting out back, that they might be interested in selling, because they don't sell them.
Yeah, they're, they're obtainable and, uh, they're, they're used, on these, there's other things you can do with the ClearView, you can get, uh, you can go down to the docks in Albany and get the used containers, and you make the, the base storage with, using shipping containers, and you build a ClearView over the top of that. It's, uh, they're very flexible, you can get storage for the sidewalls, and, uh, you know, it's, uh, alternatively, it's not the most scenic part, but if it's gonna be down where we're talking about, uh, it's a salt shed, you know?
There was one time talking about digging into the bank, setting it in the bank up there, too.
Gonna go down next year?
Well, if it goes down, then it's a stone shed, and then there's the sand shed. There's any number of reasons we can have a shed, but, uh, you know, uh, there are...
Stone shed.
There are cheaper ways of doing it than, than, uh, you know, the wood-built ones.
I know something I was gonna ask, Steve, I, this is, I'll, I'll bring it up before we get through, I didn't want to change subject right now.
No, that's about all I had, anyway.
Yeah, I think we're done.
If we aren't gonna use sand anymore, should we be getting rid of our sand pile out here?
Are you sure you're not gonna use sand?
Well, I don't know, I mean, the general...
We still need it on the paved roads.
On the paved roads, but, yeah, I, I thought it would be nice to, is there room to have some gravel brought in so that you don't have to go to dailies or someplace every time you wanna gravel some roads?
A lot of room, but there is some room we could use up there.
Okay.
What, uh, what material are you gonna be using?
Well...
You're gonna still continue to use from the pit, or are we gonna buy?
I personally would rather that you use the fractured product.
Me, too.
And what the, the Econo gravel or the fractured product they make in Shasbury could have some concrete, which is dusty. I think we're better off buying a fractured product out of the quarry.
I like that as well.
And then you can have it here, you got the decent loader, doesn't take that long to load up and get back to your job site.
There's probably room out there for some of that now, right?
Okay, I just...
If you're gonna get it from the quarry, the only thing is, I trust his judgment. When I bought some down there, I could get out of a dump truck.
Yes, I know.
Cause they had so much top on it.
Yeah. People say you gotta, gotta know when to go get it.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I think that's the thing...
He knows, right, he knows the good stuff from the bad, I'm sure.
But I think that's the thing to do, rather than have trucks tied up at the quarry or going long distances. You got a decent loader now, use it.
Yeah, and Steve's mentioned getting the better quality, reduce the dust amount on, on the roads. Better quality will reduce the amount of dust. The stuff that's breaking up from impact is, is causing a lot of dust.
Barney's pit is great for, for, for down underneath, but not as the final top.
We're only buying enough of that right now just to get by, to give them some shape to get the water off.
Yeah, okay, well, that's, that's my opinion, but it's...
I agree with you.
Okay.
Any more questions about the, uh, the garage or the Rupert site visit? All right. Thanks, Steve.
All right, Tim, that's what I'm talking about with that dump truck up there. You've, you've got plenty of room in back of there, to the right of it, to put a piece of equipment or something, if you were working on it.
Mm-hmm.
And then down on the far end, beyond that chopper, you can see the door on the end.
Yep. Do you remember the dimensions of the building?
Yeah, sixty by a hundred and twenty.
Sixty by a hundred and twenty, okay. Um, all of these were, uh, fifty feet long for the regular truck bays, the maintenance bay was at sixty, but then all the others, well, then I started going just to fifty to, uh, do that, but, uh, so it would have been a fifty feet wide. But that's a lot of space there, even if you took ten feet off of that, you'd still have a lot of room there.
Any, any of your equipment's eight feet wide. So you've got all kinds of room.
Yeah.
That is a spacious building.
It is, it was a nice building. Okay, where are we?
Opening bid.
Opening bids for Howard Park Tennis Courts.
Right, we have three, uh, three bids for the tennis courts.
Don't cut the bid in half like I do.
Try not to. Gonna have quality control here. We'll pass this first one.
All right, this is from Advantage Tennis, Inc. Maintaining courts to last.
That might be the actual bid portion.
This looks like the sales brochure.
Yeah, I think the last one's there.
Price for above work, three coats is ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Includes the shuffleboard court area.
Includes shuffleboard court area, recommended, four-year warranty on armor, repaired cracks and surface except normal wear and pre-existing moisture conditions. They offer an alternative price of two coats for nine thousand eight hundred, uh, nine thousand and eighty-five dollars, includes the shuffleboard court area, three-year warranty on armor repaired cracks and surface except normal wear and pre-existing moisture. And it says here, the three-coat system will increase the life of the coated surface by three to four years. And that's, uh, about eighteen hundred dollars more for the third coat. That was, uh, ten eight sixty-six from Advantage Tennis, Tennis. So they've got a minimum scope of work for... So they've got a minimum scope of work for resurfacing at forty-six fifty. And option A, resurfacing at seventy-eight hundred. Option B, supply and install one complete set of white textured basketball court lines for an additional four hundred. And option C, supply and install two sets of ten and under quick start lines, I don't know what that is, for a hundred and seventy-five dollars a set. Is there any warranties on that one? This option A, resurfacing, and it includes a warranty, includes pressure treat mildew areas along tree line, supply and install two new center court anchors, clean total surfaces with compressed air, fill all cracks. Supply and install one-ten LF of right-of-way crack repair system, three-year warranty on cracks. Total area to receive one coat of acrylic resurfacer. Total area to receive two coats of California red and white PlexiPave material. Textured coat to contain the proper amount of sand to provide a rough-wearing base. Top coat to contain proper amount of pigment to provide a long-lasting attractive surface. Supply and install two complete sets of white textured tennis court lines. At seventy-eight hundred dollars, they do talk about three coats of different material. The only warranty they mention is a three-year warranty against cracks not reopening. And this one is a four-year warranty on armor repaired cracks and surface, except for normal wear and pre-existing moisture conditions. So this essentially eleven-thousand-dollar bid includes a four-year warranty, and it looks like they're covering the repaired cracks and the surface. And on this one does not seem to imply a warranty on the surface itself.
What was the total roughly for the three-coat system?
Seventy-eight hundred.
Seventy-eight hundred.
Okay, so we've got seventy-eight hundred, three coats, warranty on crack repair, and we've got eleven thousand, four-year warranty, and warranty on crack repair and surface. This pretty much matches what they have there. Well, I don't think where they're warranting the surface at all that I can tell. That's probably a detail that we could pursue with that.
What I was saying is, do we want to make, can make this and scan it to everybody? I think there's a lot of reading to be done on all these.
Yeah, we're not going to make a decision tonight.
Yeah, the rec committee's meeting, I think they'd like to see this, too.
Yeah.
I'll get this to everybody, and we have one more.
Okay.
I forget who. Vermont Tennis Court Resurfacing.
This is from Vermont Tennis Court Resurfacing. Cracks.
Be careful.
Who was that basketball player there? That flop on television.
So clean and fill approximately a hundred and ten feet of structural cracks. Two hundred feet. And that one was.
Okay.
The other one was a hundred and seventy. Cleaning the surface, total repair, three coats of elite fill, two coats of elite color. And this, the total is twelve thousand six hundred and one dollars. Do we know who did it before? Forty years ago? It's lasted all this time?
I don't know when this was done, though. Wouldn't know if this has ever been done.
Seventies, I think, so.
Yeah, when it was originally built, I thought it was the last time it was worked on. At least that's the impression I have. These courts are very well-made. That's why they're worth saving. They're very well-made.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, we've got three bids. We've got to look at details because here they're talking about three coats. A repaired area will receive three coats of elite fill. Total area, one coat of elite fill and two coats of color. So there's a lot of details to be looked at here in terms of what the three coats are. Are they just paint or acrylic? So, yeah, let's.
I'll scan this to everyone, and I'll get to the rec committee, too. We're having a meeting in a couple of days.
Okay.
And they can look through it. Generally, in the scope of the grant, all these are within the scope. So, but just go over the details of what they.
Yeah. Yeah, I got to say, I'm inclined to do this job right because it got done right forty years ago, and it's lasted all this time, and so let's look hard at these bids.
Did we get a specific amount of money to spend on this, or?
Yeah, we have a ten thousand dollar state grant that we're going to match, plus a little extra left over. And through the generosity of the Lions Club, who is picking up parts of this for us, we have a little bit more money to spend.
So it sounds like we'll be able to do it right.
We would, no, that's what I mean. All these are within reason. Let's just pick the right one and preserve courts that are really well-built. Last another forty years.
But recall, we're hoping to do more than just the tennis courts this year, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, dugouts and electrical work, which is already being done, and, yeah, there's a number of projects up there. Including my very expensive water panel.
All right. We're done there. We'll move on to item thirteen. Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance ordinance.
So we have two days left for anyone to make the appeal to it. That's the twentieth is the final day of that. We need to sign this. At some point, we've adopted it, wrote it on, we can sign it after the twenty days, which would be the next meeting. You can sign it now, whatever. But, yeah, the twentieth is the last day for the appeal period for anyone to file a petition opposed to this. It is still posted. Last I saw it, Paul Lynn's out here. You can get it online and read through it if you would like to, and then we'll sign it at the next meeting or whatever. It goes into effect, I just forgot.
Slifers.
Well, the ordinance goes into effect sixty days after the adoption, which was April sixth, so somewhere towards late June. But the appeal period is, or the petition period is up on the twentieth from when we did it. So just wanted to put it out there one more time that this ordinance for variable rate pricing and hall of registration from the county has been adopted by the board, and the appeal date or the petition date to appeal is two days from now. Otherwise, it will be automatically take effect in sixty days, even though the SWIP doesn't start for sixty-seven days, but it'll be a little ahead of the curve.
And there is a meeting tomorrow of the BCSWA at Arlington from four to six. It's a public meeting. If anyone would like to stop in, I don't think there's a problem with it. I'm sorry, it's not tomorrow, Wednesday. No, it is tomorrow. No, it is Wednesday.
It's Wednesday.
Five-twenty, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Wednesday, yeah.
All right, road closure authorization for the Mr. Harrington five K. Town is working with the school to pull this event off. The plan is for this to run from Howard Park, down Buck Hill, across seven A to Cleveland, down to Cleveland Park and run back. To do that, we'll have to have runners in the street because it's a short course. They'll be running in both directions. So that morning, for a while, much as we do during the hayride up here on Buck Hill, we're going to need to close the road for a while. So we need to authorize that.
Yeah, it's just a motion like we do for Halloween, the board motions that we can close the road between, it would be between eight-thirty and ten-thirty, just to give a broad scope, on Sunday, June twenty-first. And Buck Hill Road would be closed completely from Howard Park to seven A. Cleveland would be closed completely from, I mean, Church Street would be closed completely from seven A to Church Street, seven A to Cleveland. Cleveland will be closed completely to Holiday Drive. And that would all be between the hours of eight-thirty and ten-thirty, although it'd be over by ten-thirty, but I just wanted to give a broad enough scope. So we need a motion just to do that, to cover our people.
They're going to stop traffic?
Oh, well, I'll get into that after the motion because there's expenses involved, and we'll have to get into that in a minute, too. But the board needs to just, just like Halloween, you make a motion to allow, protects us for insurance.
All right.
Go ahead.
Motion to close the street from Howard Park to seven A and from, and Church Street from seven A to Cleveland Avenue on the twenty-second, or twenty-first of June.
And Cleveland to Holiday.
Cleveland to Holiday.
You're turning around the park, right?
Turning around at the park, yeah. How many times are you going to do that? Oh, down and back is five K? Yeah, Howard Park, down and back, five K. So just once. Okay, that's my motion. Okay.
Second.
Second by Ken Harrington.
Okay, I've been in touch with the state police. They're going to, I'm going to get back to Sergeant Turner to see what kind of staffing they can provide on the date. Just by my general estimation, we're going to need to have a road closed ahead sign at Buck Hill and East Road. Buck Hill and Rod and Gun Club, we're going to need a man post at Howard, the entrance to Howard Park. There'll be a trooper or a sheriff. I still have to check on availability of troopers for seven A and Buck Hill. We're going to need a man post at Church and Cleveland, Cleveland and Holiday, and signs at sixty-seven and Church saying road closed ahead. There are alternates out here, depending on how we have to finance this, from seeing if a road department person wants a volunteer for overtime to put signs out and bring them back in, and could actually man a post as a road closed. I've spoken with a constable about possibly also taking part in this, which would be helpful because as a constable, they could have actually authority over it, which would give us someone in charge. The option two is to hire sheriffs, it's a four-hour minimum, so I think we'd be talking about two hundred dollars a sheriff.
There's not a minimum on the sheriffs.
Yes, there is.
There is. There is?
There always is.
Yep.
There always is. It's a four-hour minimum. Not for patrol. This is an extra-duty job.
Extra-duty, okay, yeah, not for patrol.
And the state police have generously offered to help out, but I have to make sure that, you know, there's limits. If it's all on-duty guys, I'm not sure. We have to make sure there's someone here as crossing seven A, so we'll see what we can work out with that. But there will be a bit of an expense involved in it. Not too much, but a couple hundred dollars at least. But we'll have it all lined up. And we look, I looked into the fire police as a question of whether or not this really is, you know, if the fire police function under the fire chief in a fire emergency, this is stretching that about as far as I can.
Well, the fire chiefs close it on Halloween, right? They do.
Yeah. Yeah, it's.
So Halloween's not a fire emergency.
Yeah, I know, but we're drawing a really narrow line here that is, to me, is a liability issue. If we have a sheriff or a constable.
Constable.
We're protected. If we have a fire policeman who's doing a good thing for us, but somebody cleverly argues that we're not, it wasn't being used in a true fire emergency, we could have an issue, I think, so.
Okay. Yeah, we're not talking about enough money to be worth risking.
No, no, you know, if we have to hire a couple of sheriffs for a few hundred dollars, then it's well worth it to cross the kids safely here and make sure nothing else goes on. You know, but we could have the constables, too, could be manning some, like the Howard Park thing, because they do have authority to be doing this. So we're looking into some alternatives, but we'll get it done. And like I said, hopefully the troopers will be available, too. But, yep, so if we have a vote on that, we're done.
Any more discussion on that? All in favor of closing the roads for the Mr. Harrington Finish Line five K as defined? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion is agreed to, five zero zero. Better Back Roads Grant Application.
So we put in a grant to Vermont Better Back Roads. The town has never applied for one before. This will be to do an engineering survey of Shasberry Hollow as, because the little White Creek runs through there and the sediment and runoff in the roads might affect it. Clearly, we have some issues with the roadway up there and how it's designed. I saw a sample from Land Grove where one of these was done. It was really unbelievable. For four thousand dollars, we get a grant for one thousand in matching, and that one thousand is basically the interim road foreman going up there and walking the road with the engineer showing him where the problems are, and they design repair plans for all the areas. It's a great four thousand dollars of free engineering if we get this grant, and that road needs it, and then we could set off and have a solid plan on how to fix the problems there. I mean, I could go through the list, but I think we're all aware of this multiple problems up there from not having proper drainage, even what we were talking about before where the power company blocked off the top of the trees. Part of the plan is, okay, well, then we take off the bottom, ditch it out. The road needs to be graded to different directions. There's not enough prain areas. It's a whole number of things. So if we get this grant, we'll have the road engineered, and it wouldn't be anything so dramatic that our road crew couldn't go up and start addressing each of these, and it could really have a sizable impact on the road.
So do we get a motion to send in this grant?
No, the grant's been sent in. I could sign and send it in, so we just, we came up to the time to get it in. We kind of found out about it late. And actually, I got to give credit to Shelley Stiles, our zoning administrator, who was very helpful in putting the whole thing together and helping, really was a great help in getting it done. So we sent it in Friday to, this is who she works for, to the Bennington County Conservation District. And so she was very helpful in putting the whole thing together and getting into the office in time. So it was kind of a rush thing. But like I said, if we get four thousand dollars in free engineering, that's a good deal.
All right. I move that Dave be allowed to apply for the Better Back Roads grant with the one-thousand-dollar match.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is agreed to, five zero zero. Town audit.
Okay. The town has an audit policy that the town should be audited, excuse me, my allergies. We'll have an audit of all town accounts at the end of Shasberry Treasurer's term of office, normally every three years. If the treasurer is in office for more than one term, the audit will be done every six years. Most accountants and people you talk to think this is a very long time, and in any event, we need one now because it hasn't been done for several years. I put together the proposal, a request for proposals for audit. This was put together, and I went through this with Bill Fisk, too, to see if the appropriate wording was here for getting what we needed. Bill had advised to add in the requesting a management letter, which is basically the auditing firm giving opinions on the, how the organization's functioning.
Oh, there it is.
And then also, he suggested I put in, apparently at the last audit, people wanted to ask some questions, but, you know, auditors are like lawyers, the clock's running, so if you want to ask me a question, I'll start billing you. So I wanted to have an option of ten hours of consulting time, so that if we did want to sit down and talk, they'd be happy to sit down and talk with us about things. It looks pretty sparse. This is actually a copy from, I forget what town I copied this proposal from and ran it by Bill, and he just made the edits of the management letter in the ten hours. And we'll just get proposals in and see what they're charging and what they're charging for. I've checked a couple of other towns that are getting single audits for one year, and the prices, I've heard, twelve thousand from some people, so. the price is, I've heard, twelve thousand from some people, so, uh, it's not outrageous. Uh, the other thing to keep costs down is I asked for a two year option on this, and maybe we should be looking at just accepting this as a cost of doing business and being audited. Uh, once you get past the initial, and actually, we have eleven thousand, five hundred and forty-two in the account right now, so if it's not too much higher than that, and it may be to get this going, because it's been a few years, but, uh, I'm not an expert in audit, so I, this is one reason why we were asking for proposals, uh, I'm going to put this log on the VCT's website and get a broad spectrum of people sending us, and then I think we'll just get back to it and see where we stand. It's hard to even say what we would, what response we'll get, but I think it's, it's just time to do it.
Yeah.
It's time to do it, and, uh, if we get decent pricing, we could look at just making an annual event at, uh, if it could be brought down to a reasonable amount by offering the two year option, uh, you know, it's something we just could just start doing annually, and just put it out for bid proposals every three years, for one year with two year options, and, uh, you know, one, once it's, you start doing it, it's about a quarter of a cent on the tax dollars, so, you know, it'd be something that would always be there. So with the board's permission, I'll, uh, put the ad in and, uh, see what we get for it.
So move. We have a motion to allow Dave to, uh, request proposals for a town audit.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tony, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is agreed to, five zero zero. And as if you haven't been doing it already, you can now give us your town administrator's report.
The delinquent tax collector, uh, just needs to, to request the board and notify the board that, uh, he needs to hire an attorney in the course of his business for an upcoming sale.
Tax sale?
Yeah, so, I, I don't know if that requires a motion, it's, uh, he's required to inform you, but I don't think it requires a motion, I don't think he...
Yeah, I don't recall this, uh...
I think he said last time it was, he has the authority, he just likes to let us know.
He likes to let you know, that's how he put it to me, I don't think he...
I think he has the authority, he has to, he has to.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
So, we don't need a motion to usurp his authority?
No.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, the next thing is a request to cater, uh, hometown hospitality, the perfect wake restaurant and tavern for a wedding rehearsal on Town Line Road on, uh, June twelfth of twenty fifteen. It's just the board approval, uh, that they can provide liquor at this event.
Who favors? Uh, motion to approve the catering request from Mitch Race, seconded by Tim Skoggins. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is agreed to, five zero zero.
Okay, and then we have the famous LEOP.
What do, what do I have to do now?
You have to sign it, so you can be done with it.
Okay.
Did you take the course?
I took the course, it was painful. Uh, it's, uh, they claim it's a three hour course, it probably took me an hour and a half to do it. The hardest part is, uh, well, let me say that the point of the course is to outline the ICS, Incident Command System of FEMA, which is a, uh, a unified management system for managing any, uh, incident disaster of any kind, from, um, flaming truck going off the road to a hurricane. And, uh, the very basics of it involve, uh, things like establishing common vocabulary, so that when you start bringing together people from, uh, law enforcement and, uh, electric companies and everybody, and you start saying, you know, get the, uh, get the, you know, this contingency crew and this supervisor over here, that we all have the same vocabulary, and we know what things mean. Uh, so a lot of it was the, the philosophy of that, and, but a lot of it was the, uh, just the vocabulary, which is not hard, the only part I really found hard was chief versus supervisor versus leader versus, you know, and what each of one of those, uh, went on, and I suspect I didn't make a hundred on the test, but I, I did get enough to pass.
As long as you pass. As long as you can sign.
Yeah, so you just need me to...
Uh, the front page there, I think there's, there's a block there for you to sign, I'll get it off to the state. Where's the bottom there, I think it is?
Oh, here, it's like, what's here, so, yeah, that's one. Okay, I'm just saying that we adopted the plan.
Yeah, but you can't sign unless you take the course.
Oh, okay.
Which has nothing to do with the plan, but...
Certifying individual must have taken at a minimum ICS one hundred, oh, so I had to take that just so I could sign this piece of...
Just so you could sign this. See, and I've taken that course so many times that I re-certified myself.
Re-certified myself.
This has been around for a while, and that was the last item of business I have.
Okay, very good. Any other business that anyone wants to bring up?
Heard anything on that truck, Dave?
Yes, we did, uh, part of it I can't discuss, uh, because it, uh, because it's, it's an act of investigation, but, uh, uh, we are, I spoke with our insurance, the guy who's actually investigating it for us, and we are in a very, very strong position, and I'm not concerned at all about being paid completely. The rest of it, uh, I don't know where it is in the process, so I don't want to comment about it, but we have a very strong position according to our insurer, and given the facts, I think we'll be fine. Uh, it's in the paint shop, though, so...
Do we get credit for depreciation?
It was practically rebuilt, so I don't, I don't know. But, uh, we, Steve just called them last week, that, you know, they're still kind of dragging along on it. Went to the paint shop again two weeks ago, it's back at Viking now, uh, you know, it, next week, next week.
That, that's the paint shop for the body, it's not the paint shop for the truck itself?
No, 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 the truck, they already tried painting the truck once, which, uh, we're going to have an issue with that when it gets down here, too.
Okay.
Uh, but it, it's all still prepared in our insurance carrier, and their adjusters are still just waiting, uh, for it to get down to DeLory's so we can finish this. Once it gets to DeLory's, it'll be fine, and, uh, like I said, our, our, the main person working for us with the insurance company is, uh, very pleased with the outcome of, of the cause and origin report, so...
Uh, DeLory has the authority to send in when the truck is actually being used, that's when it starts our warranty, so he, he can hold off on telling International to start the warranty time.
Yeah, that's a good point, all right, I'll have to talk to him about that, because we took possession of the truck nearly a year ago, and haven't driven it at all.
That's right.
Uh, so we, yeah, we'll have to turn the clock back a little bit.
I, I think...
Yeah, yeah, we'll talk, we'll talk to him about that, yeah, just by the time it gets down here, still, I mean, we'll have it for, uh, the end of the summer, but, uh...
Yeah, just...
No, that's a good point, because I think it was November?
Yeah.
November when we took possession of it, because it got up there in December and burnt up and...
As far as I know, he has the ability to do that, to start the clock, okay?
Okay, yeah, we'll talk to him about it. But I'm hoping, too, speaking of him, that now that we have some, uh, uh, very positive information in our favor, that we'll get this rental squared away, too. Uh, because we, we are in a good position now.
All right, um, action items, I started writing down all the things that, uh, Dave asked permission to do, but, uh, I probably didn't get them all, uh, but we, I did write down that he has permission to pursue restructuring the treasurer's office, uh, and he can look and, I'm sure he's written down all of the things we've allowed him to do. Uh, I mentioned, I noticed that, uh, Steve said we need work on Potter Montgomery.
Potter Montgomery, yeah.
So that's something for him to look into, and then just mentioned the, uh, when the insurance clock starts ticking on our, uh, our new burn truck.
Warranty.
Warranty.
Warranty, yeah.
Warranty.
Yeah, good idea, warranty clock, yeah. Okay. Anything else? All right, I move we go into executive session to discuss a personnel issue, seconded by Mitch, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.